Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. We'll start with the acceptance of the meeting minutes from the meeting of November twenty-third.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, I dropped.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Jamie, we're gonna have you hold out because you were not here.
Oh, that's right.
So it's just the three of us. So all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
That's the three of us. Okay, thank you. Nothing under communications or audience, correct, Dr. Krone?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll start to you for superintendent's report.
Thank you. Share my screen. Okay. Just wanna give a little update and overview of where we are with COVID and our hybrid learning and just in general how things are going. I'm gonna run through our current COVID situation in the Rockland Public Schools, give you the data as of three o'clock this afternoon. I'm gonna review our current reporting and communication protocols, give you a little bit of what what's working from the perspective of our steering committee and what our challenges are. So I just wanna remind everyone of sort of what we are doing on a daily basis. Positive COVID cases are reported to the school or to the health department Monday through Sunday and are immediately shared between Jane, Delshaun Flip, Kathy Ryan, and myself. All decisions about who will quarantine, when, and for how long are made cooperatively by this group. So every single situation, every time we ask someone to quarantine, every time we are keeping a student from coming to school or a staff member, those decisions are being made by the same four people. And this way, we check each other, we come to consensus, and we're we're shooting for consistency and safety. We have repeatedly chosen the more cautious route. For example, Rockland Public Schools is using six feet as opposed to three feet of social distancing. We've continued to quarantine for fourteen days even after new state guidance has recently reduced that time to seven days. I say evidence-based decision because we have had instances where if we hadn't quarantined for fourteen days, we would have had asymptomatic people in the building spreading, potentially spreading the COVID. Household members of close contacts are quarantining until the close contact tests negative. This again is above and beyond what we are required to do, but we have again caught cases and kept asymptomatic individuals out of the building by having this process in place. We are also keeping family members of symptomatic, non-tested family members home. And I will say, and again, thank the community, family members are being extremely cooperative and supportive when we make these calls. Again, thank you to Jane and the nurses who are making a lot of these calls. Sometimes in the middle school, for example, made ninety-six calls yesterday alone. Communication, just to share. We are in constant communication with, between the school and the town hall on a daily basis, working with Delshaun Flip. We are constantly communicating to families on a daily basis. If there are new cases, I am sending emails to families and to the community. I also, we are trying very hard to stay in communication with our staff. The principals are primary point people for this. We meet with the union on a regular basis, usually once or twice a week minimal, just to stay on the same page, to hear what what they're hearing from their members and to try to make decisions collaboratively. And then we are in constant communication with the school committee, trying to keep you folks informed as to what's going on. And my litmus test is always, you know, if a school committee member is going to be asked about it, I don't want you to hear about it at the grocery store. I want you to hear about it from me first, so that's my goal. And then families to school, we are very, very appreciative of the families that are reaching out to share their testing situation or even that someone in the house is sick. We're tracking everything. Jane is tracking everything. And then every time we get a new case, I have to report it to the state. So I either call the Department of Education or I am now on a first-name basis with a number of associate commissioners and we text back and forth now in some cases. Our close contact protocol, just wanna review this with everyone. This was developed collaboratively with the Rockland Health Department. Positive cases can return ten days from the date of positive test results if they are symptom-free for twenty-four hours. To the next bullet, I am going to, this PowerPoint will be posted on the website. So anyone who's watching, don't feel as though you have to screenshot or take notes. I'm happy to email this presentation to anyone, but it will be posted on the website by tomorrow, so no need to take notes. Close contacts can return fourteen days after their last exposure to the positive case. Close contacts should be quarantining from household members throughout the fourteen-day period. Household members of close contacts can return to school buildings when the close contact tests negative, but should continue to isolate from their household member for the entire quarantine period. And we are strongly encouraging PCRs on the eighth day after last exposure to a positive case. For those who are unaware, if you are exposed to COVID and get a test on the same day or even the next day or the day after that, the test may not show that you're positive. So you wanna wait until after a few days of exposure before that test is truly accurate. So we're encouraging PCRs on the eighth day after last exposure. I wanna give, these are our current numbers. Jane Hackett, I'm gonna ask you to walk through this in case you have any insights that you wanna share. But I think it's fairly self-explanatory. This is number of staff who are out, total number of children who are out, staff members who are positive currently. This is as of three PM this afternoon. Positive students, close contacts. When you get over here, your student close contacts, this is sick staff. So they may not necessarily be COVID, but they are sick and sick students. But sometimes these students turn into positive COVID, so that's why we're tracking them. And then staff holds, household, close contacts, and student households, close contacts. Jane, you wanna, is there anything you wanna say about this?
No, I think it's, I think that's, I can't see the bottom of the screen. If you could press exit. Oh, sorry.
No, no problem. I don't, I don't know if it'll let me.
Okay.
If I do that, it'll stop presenting. Hold on, it'll go.
Okay, no, that's all right. I have it up on my own screen. So we're looking at seven percent of our staff is out, six percent of our children. So another way to look at it is ninety-three percent are in, ninety-four percent are in.
That's good.
So, and one and a half percent of staff positive and point seven percent of students positive. So again, the last four columns are the columns that are above and beyond the protocols. And it's here that I think we've really saved a lot of potential exposure for folks by minimizing those folks being in school. And again, I just wanna really thank the families for their outstanding communication and the nurses for all of their really, really hard work over the course of several months.
Thank you, Jane. So we had a steering committee meeting about a week ago and then had a stakeholder meeting last week. So some of the feedback that we're getting, what's working well? Are week-on-week-off schedules proving to have educational and operational benefits? Until we had to go remote, starting today, our students were receiving approximately thirty hours in a week of in-person instruction. Following week, they'd be fully remote. This is, it was, is a substantial amount of FaceTime with teachers. We felt very good about that. We were very disappointed to have to go remote starting today. But the operational benefits from a COVID standpoint are the cohorts have have kept the groups from infecting one another. And so it's allowed, it's allowed for more students to be in school. Teacher effectiveness and tenacity. I get stories on a daily basis and thank you notes from parents, just praising our teachers and the work that they're doing. The amount of face-to-face teaching and learning time our students are receiving or were receiving until today. The performance of our custodians, nurses, and drivers. Our buildings would not have stayed open as long as they did if our custodians weren't doing their jobs and our nurses weren't being so proactive and communicating so effectively. And I wanna thank our drivers for their work as well. Consistent communication between and among stakeholders was also pointed out as a high, as a highlight. Student cooperation. You know, I can't thank students enough. There's been almost zero student discipline this year, which is truly remarkable. This one I am especially proud of. I think everyone is especially proud of this. We launched our one-to-one Chromebook initiative over the summer, even though everything that's been going on. And we now have and can say with confidence, not only does every student pre-K to twelve have a Chromebook in their possession, but one hundred percent of our students have online access. We have delivered and installed mobile access points. We have helped families get access through Comcast and other services. And we have hotspots waiting. So if anyone knows someone out there who still is having trouble with connection for some reason and we haven't gotten to them, I, I'd be very hard-pressed to to find someone that we haven't gotten to, but we have plenty of resources for folks and we're really, really proud of this.
That's good.
The implementation of our safety protocols with fidelity. We feel that people have done an excellent job with social distancing and mask-wearing and hand washing and all of the other protocols that we have in place. The Google Suite has proven to be an excellent platform for us. We feel it's, it's consistent throughout the entire district. This has made it easier for students and families to access the curriculum and easier for teachers to deliver the curriculum. Lisa Ryan is our point person on that and she's done an exceptional job. This morning at about seven fifteen, I received texts that Google was down. And not only in Rockland, but all across the area, maybe across the entire state. Actually, I think it was international. I believe Colleen was telling me that Lisa was telling her it was down in Moscow and London. We weren't particularly concerned about that. Google did get their act together very quickly and we were back online by about seven thirty-five and the day went on. So the Google Suite has proven to be, worked well for us. And then finally, food service is doing an outstanding job and they're continuing to serve free lunch and free breakfast for the entire district. What are our challenges? We, we are, we are learning that teaching remotely is very difficult. And no matter how well we do it, it's our opinion that it's not as effective as in-person learning. That said, we can continue to get better at remote teaching and learning, but we're, we've accepted the fact that it is not as effective as in-person. And I think the kids know that as well. Lack of planning time for teachers during the school day is something that I have been hearing about since we opened. It's got, it's come to a, it's gotten more and more challenging for folks and we are working on ways to find additional prep time for them. Staffing concerns when multiple staff members are quarantined or ill. It's very difficult for principals to staff the building. At the high school, you may end up with, you know, if a teacher's out, you may end up with a study hall in the CAF. At the elementary, you may have teachers who are covering other classes. It's just people are really stepping up and doing whatever it takes to get the job done, so we thank them for that. Students who are quarantined create a third cohort of students for which teachers must prepare. So teachers are preparing for in-school lessons, for remote lessons, but they're also preparing work for these students who are quarantined because they're, in effect, they are, they are sick. So we're treating, they, the teachers have to create work for them and keep them on track. And you may have two students who will go out on Monday, another five who go out on Tuesday and Wednesday. And this, keeping this straight for the teachers is very complex, but they continue to do it, but it is a challenge. We're obviously concerned and have been since the start of the year that achievement gaps are gonna grow in this environment, so we're keeping our eyes on that. And we're concerned with overall academic performance and growth and asking ourselves, where will we be at the start of FY twenty-two? And then maintaining the morale of staff. I think, again, the feedback that I've gotten from parent-teacher conferences has been extremely positive. I think parents are impressed with our teachers and their tenacity. But I worry about on a daily basis maintaining the morale of our leadership team and of our teachers. This is a very difficult time, and so it's something that we consider a challenge and something that we are working on all the time. And I know that the school committee is thinking about that as well. Budget. We are waiting for the federal government, just like the rest of the United States, for for CARES Act funding or some sort of federal relief package, and we are desperately hoping that they have their act together well enough to get that done before holiday break. And if they don't, they should be ashamed of themselves. We are currently projecting an eight-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-dollar FY twenty-one deficit, and this is completely driven by our remote learning needs. We have used so far of the federal money, one-point-seven-million dollars, but we have ongoing remote personnel costs with no identified source of funding. So again, we are waiting on the federal government to pass a stimulus package. We are maximizing and prioritizing our grants and use of revolving accounts. So we are, some grants allow us to spread the grant money over multiple years so that we can put a little away for next year that we think may be even more challenging than this year. So we're, we're doing everything we can to maximize our grants and revolving accounts. We have purchased enough PPE for the remainder of the school year. And that is, we stopped sharing for a moment. And that is just sort of an update for where we are and how things are going. Again, it was a very difficult decision to decide to go remote yesterday. We awoke on Sunday morning to learn that on Saturday the town had logged eighty-three new cases over a three-day period. And they had had approximately the same number over a three-week period prior to that. So we were experiencing a real spike and a concern, overall concern for the well-being and safety of our students, staff, and families. So we decided to go remote. That was a very difficult decision. And again, I thank everyone for all the conversations that we had on Sunday to get that, Saturday and Sunday to get that done. But anyway, it's, I feel disappointed that we had to go remote. At the same time, we have to be safe, and so we made that decision. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments about that. I just wanted to give an update and an overview.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How's the, the first-term grades from last year versus this year? Look.
Let me, let me turn that to John Harrison. I could guess, but I'd rather hear from someone who's right in there. John, do you have any?
I can only speak for the high school, but the teachers were extremely flexible with the students. So the students who were in our hybrid model had a failure rate for term one of six percent, which is less than typical. Usually it varies between seven and nine percent for a term one failure rate. Kids in the Remote Learning Academy, when you include the students in the Remote Learning Academy, the failure rate for term one was fourteen percent, which means a lot of students in the Remote Learning Academy are continuing to struggle. We keep encouraging students in the Remote Learning Academy to come back to the hybrid model.
Hey, okay, thank you. I'm just trying to figure out how we could, you know, we're gonna improve that, how we can help these students out.
Yeah, it's the disconnected are a constant challenge. I can tell you, though, that we're dealing with it one student at a time and we have an excellent team in place. So we have, again, adjustment counselors in every building, school psychologists in every building, and we're very actively pursuing those students who are quote-unquote falling behind. And as you read in the reports, the directors' reports, our guidance counselors are very busy working with students remotely, trying to keep them engaged and.
Keep at it. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about that report?
I just have a question. How is the staff today? I know, John, I think you're the only principal on, but how is the high school staff's attitude and morale today, I guess?
They're great. They're flexible. They've been rolling, they've been just rolling with it since day one. So they've kept a positive attitude. I'm sure if I ask, that's what they'll tell me, but I'm sure deep down they're frustrated. And I'm sure they would prefer just a normal school year, but I think at this point they've adapted quite well and are doing the best they can out of the circumstances. It is very hard for the teachers to switch to remote, just as it is for the students. They have to look at Cohort A and Cohort B. One cohort's ahead of the other cohort, so now they gotta take them together and teach them at the same time, which is a bigger class, but also they're at different points in the curriculum. So today was probably challenging, but it'll get better as they go on.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, what kind of feedback we getting back? Have we got any feedback from the parents on how we're doing?
Survey just went out today, Tom, so I'm looking forward to get that information back. That survey was just posted this morning.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be interesting to see. Okay, thank you.
Yep. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Krone. I know I was, feel the same as you. I was disappointed that we had to pull and go remote. But I feel that we made it a far way further than we probably all thought we were going to make it. And I am really hopeful that we do get to get back come January fourth. Last year when we had to pull out March thirteenth and then we never made it back, it was really disheartening. And I'm really hopeful that the town will stick together and really, you know, keep the numbers down so the kids can get back into, into class.
I have one other question. Are we getting any, any reinforcement from the state, Alan?
What kind of reinforcement?
Any, any, any additional help, any additional monies or anything, you know, any, you know, that they say, hey, we have this particular, you know, program that, you know, that you can, you know, try to implement. I don't know.
The only, the only resource that we've been able to take advantage of so far was the mobile testing unit that we called out about a month and a half ago.
Okay.
When we, when we had to close the high school for two weeks because of a cluster. So they did come out and that was paid for by the state. But again, they're waiting on the federal government for funding. So I think everyone's in a holding pattern, waiting for the feds to, to get together and pass a bill.
Yeah, how about, you know, any resources that, you know, that any, anything that we can use from other school districts that might be helpful? Have you talked to any of your cohorts?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in constant contact with superintendents in our immediate area. We talk on a nearly daily basis, letting each other know what's going on and asking one another questions. You know, Whitman Hansen had a very challenging week last week with losing a teacher. And so we tried to support them with our, we offer, you know, our assistance to one another. It's a very close-knit community on the South Shore, so.
Yeah.
We are, we are, we are sharing resources, but I think it's mostly, mostly support for one another and someone to bounce an idea off.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Hennessy, you had a question?
Yes, Dr. Krone, could you just talk about the rationale of changing cohorts in the schedule when we go back on January fourth? I think that was sort of the biggest reaction that I heard with people had planned out when their kids were gonna be in and out. And I guess, I think I know why. We have Cohort B going back that first week. But just for the audience to hear the rationale and the thought process behind that.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, Cohort B was scheduled to be in school today. And if we didn't flip-flop the cohorts, they wouldn't have been back in front of teachers for well over a month. To keep the curriculum aligned and to keep the curriculum delivery schedule aligned, we needed to flip-flop that schedule. If we had not flip-flopped the schedule, my email in your phone would have been over the people who are saying, why is my kid not in school for a month? So we, we made the decision, the difficult decision, to flip-flop the schedule. And I apologize to those families for whom that is a hardship. At the same time, we are educators and we're here to educate. Our first responsibility is to teach, and we need to teach in an organized and effective manner. And we needed to make that change. So I apologize to those families that it's been a hardship, but that is why we made the change. And again, if we didn't make the change, I think we would have a lot more people complaining, but that's just speculation.
Thank you. I figured that's what it was. I just wanted everybody else to sort of hear it from, directly from you guys. So I think it's a tough decision, no matter which way we go, right? So we're all just getting through it together.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not on anyone's Christmas card list today.
Go ahead, mine.
Oh, thank you.
I'm not on mine in my own home. We are Cohort B. And my daughter was looking forward to Spirit Week and band and seeing her friends once more before the holiday. So it's nice when mom is the one calling school to go to remote. Anyone else have any questions? No? Okay, thank you, Dr. Krone. We'll move on to monthly reports for November. We have administrators, Dr. Harris and Ms. Bond, Ms. Smith, Mrs. Scheifele, and Mrs. Sheehan. We have guidance, Ms. Black, Nurse Mrs. Ryan, and Personnel Services, Dr. Minicula.
Were motions to accept the meeting, the documents?
Four seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The four of us. Moving to monthly reports for September and October for the middle school, we have Mr. Griffin. He's the only one, Tom, so just one motion. Second. All those in favor?
All in favor.
That's the four of us. Moving to monthly newsletters for December for Esten Jefferson Memorial Park, the middle school and the high school. I didn't actually, I usually pull something aside just to comment and I didn't get to, so.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions? Anyone wanna chat about it?
No, thank you.
Okay. And we'll move on to Curriculum Corner with the Rockland High School with Mr. McAllister for Social Studies. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you.
Aye.
I'm gonna share my screen with you guys. Just give me one second to pull this up. Thank you guys for giving me an opportunity to speak with you today about some of the changes that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has made to history and social sciences over the last couple of years. As mentioned, my name is Rich McAllister and I am the Curriculum Chair for History, Social Sciences here at the high school. And I also have with me this evening Callie and Mona Lisa, who are gonna be helping me out a little bit later on in the presentation. So one of the things that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education did in two thousand and eighteen is not only adjust the frameworks, but also adjusted what they believe an effective history, social science education should look like with a focus on things like diverse perspectives, integrating knowledge, students working on things like research and reasoning, making logical arguments, and obtaining independent thought. Reading comprehension is always a skill that we value and continue to improve upon as well as coveted history, social science skills like analyzing, the ability to interpret, assess, as well as present findings. And one of the newer things that the, that DESI has implemented is students' capacity for activism as well as civic engagement. And I think sometimes when we think of activism, we envision pitchforks and torches and we're storming the State House. And that's not necessarily the case. Our objective is to help students to become agents of change. So if they're noticing something, a deficiency within their community or a deficiency within their school, it could be at the state, the national, or even at an international level. We wanna give those students a voice and give those students an opportunity to be able to apply their skills in the appropriate avenues to help become an agent of change. And so that's, that's probably the most important new change that DESI has, has implemented. As far as direct changes to the curriculum, if anyone is interested, feel free to email me at any point and I can share with you my presentation, but I have a hyperlink here that'll take you directly to DESI's history, social science curriculum changes. But the, the main objective is that we're breaking away from rote memorization and we're focusing instead on thematic skills and skill-based learning. So students are encouraged to, again, increase an emphasis on civics. Not only are students are expected to apply their skills to a project at the eighth grade, but they're also going to be applying a similar project at the high school level as well. And I'll talk a little bit about that later on in the presentation. The standards reflect diversity in world cultures. I think our previous frameworks were very Eurocentric and it was either the United States or Western European nations. And so I think we've done a better job of incorporating other parts of the world, especially as we see Rockland begin to show its diversity a little bit more. We're helping to engage those students more within the classroom because the curriculum has made the appropriate adjustments. They've also amended the questions that help students to guide inquiry. So I give you an example. Questions now are asking students to assess the validity of a sentence. So, you know, to what extent has the reform era resulted in an impactful change for both women and African-Americans? Asking a question like, assess the validity of the statement, the students have the opportunity to decide whether or not that is a valid statement. Asking a question like assess the validity of the statement, the students have the opportunity to decide whether or not that is a valid statement. So they could argue that the reform era was impactful for women or African Americans. They could argue that it was not impactful. There's also a sliding scale where students can say, maybe for women, they found that it was an impactful era, but for African Americans, it wasn't. And I always tell my students in the classroom, I'm never going to tell you that your, your argument is wrong, but I want to make sure that you're using your evidence appropriately to support your argument. And what this is doing is it's giving students an opportunity to lead their own learning. It's giving students an opportunity to embrace their ideas. And it's also giving the students an opportunity to utilize the skills that they're developing within the classroom. And we're always looking for students to improve upon their literacy standards. There was a major shift in United States history too, where there's a greater focus on financial literacy as well. And not just within the roaring twenties or the Great Depression, but all the way to present day. So that's something new that we're beginning to tackle, to begin to establish more of an economic perspective and through an economic lens on many of our lessons as well. I think with news and media literacy, that's also going to be an ongoing challenge because there are so many mediums for students to be able to acquire information. We want to help those students navigate through those devices and navigate through that information. I think too often we look at an attractive headline and we have a tendency to focus our attention on the headline itself and not actually read the article. And so these are basic skills that we want our students to be able to work on so that when they do enter the real world or a little bit more independent, they have an opportunity to make a sound decision. And of course, expanding the use of primary and secondary sources, which is something that history and social science courses have been doing for quite some time. But it's obviously a skill that we want to continue to improve. So those are really the major changes that the DESI curriculum is beginning to focus on. And this slide is just going to discuss a little bit about some of the changes that we've made at the high school to help to embrace these changes as well as to foster the development of these particular skills. And I'm just going to click on this link here for a second. What I ended up doing is, is each year we develop a history and social science improvement plan. And the idea is for us to be able to organize our areas of focus and our areas of concern for the year. This year was supposed to be a focus on assessments as well as instructional practices. And so on the far left-hand side in these columns over here, we have our areas to address. And then we make sure that we connect those areas that we are planning on addressing with our district as well as our school improvement plans. And we're also connecting them to our NEAS Growth Improvement Plan as well. And so this is just helping to validate a little bit more about what we're doing within the classroom and how we're spending some of our PD time as well as our time to be able to collaborate with one another and our peers when we have that time allocated in, in school. So the first thing that we ended up doing to address the areas of, of change from DESI was to rewrite our curriculum and adjust our courses' scope and sequence. We also pay greater attention to the various skills that DESI is looking to, looking for us to focus on. So again, the ability to analyze, interpret, assess, develop, argumentation, evidence to be able to support our, our arguments, our ability to focus on themes like continuity, our ability to compare and contrast, and again, contextualization, which is, which is always important as well. And this doesn't necessarily mean that we're moving away from content. It just means that we're not focusing solely on rote memorization. So I think for many of us when we were in school, and certainly when I was in high school, it was a memorization of names and dates and events. And it wasn't really utilizing any of that material. And I, I tell my students, you know, the, the content should be used to demonstrate a student's ability to master a particular skill. So the, the content is going to change from one lesson to the next, from one unit to the next. But ultimately, we want those skills to repeat because those are the skills that are transferable. Those are the skills that you're beginning to see in, in your other classes. And those are the skills that you're going to be assessed on in a number of major assessments. And I'll focus on that a little bit later on as well. We've also focused our attention on developing common documents. So for US History 1, there are a number of documents that all the United States history teachers are going to focus their attention on. Same thing with US History 2, same exact thing for World History 2 as well. And having that commonality and a common approach to tackling those documents, I think is helpful not only for staff, but it's going to be helpful for students as well. We also have focused a lot of our attention on developing common language. So for using primary and secondary sources, we like to say that we hippo the documents. And so we have these posters set up in our classrooms and we have them in the history hallway as well. So when a student is approaching a primary or secondary source, they know that they have to look for historical context. They know that they have to focus on the intended audience. They need to make sure they understand the purpose of the document. They need to understand the point of view of the document. And obviously, any sort of outside information that could help them to better understand that document is going to be valued as well. We also have a common approach to being able to write essays. And this is something that for the last couple of years, we've worked alongside the, the English department to help to, to utilize some of the common language. So an argumentative thesis for history might look a little bit different than a thesis statement for English. But we want to make sure that we're using common language so that the students have a better grasp of the situation and a better grasp of, of the objective. We also have developed a common rubric within the history department. And so all the skills and the focuses of what DESI believes and appropriate history, social science education should look like. That's what you see here on the left-hand column. And then we've, we've graded them out from beginning to advanced as far as a student's skill set. So we still have mastering the core body of knowledge. Like I said, the content isn't going anywhere. It's just how we're using the content. That's the new focus. Again, focusing on our ability to assess and analyze, utilize information effectively. Students are able to demonstrate an understanding of the importance of civic mindedness and community engagement. So that's really embracing that, that new piece that DESI has implemented, both at the eighth grade level as well as the high school with these new civics projects, demonstrating an understanding of and utilizing ethical and moral practices to help achieve goals. And this is really important for us to focus on as well as our ability to recognize diverse ideas and perspectives. And so our hope is that by the time a student graduates from Rockland High School, they will be proficient or advanced in each of these skill sets, in each of these areas of focus. And we've really began to utilize this rubric when we focus on mid-year exams as well as final exams. So it's okay if a student is in the developing column or even in the beginning column early in the year. The idea is we want to watch those students grow and we want those students to see themselves grow. So we want to help to foster a, a growth mindset within these students to help them to encourage, to improve upon these skills year after year, lesson after lesson, unit after unit. So we, we have found that this rubric has been helpful. But I think we, we are still trying to figure out how we can implement it a little bit more consistently, other than just with mid-year and final exams. And then, of course, we've begun to rewrite our mid-year exams as well as our final exams. A lot of our older exams, common assessments that we utilized had focused on things like rote memorization. And again, we're trying to break free from that. So to give you guys an example, this is the US History 1 mid-year exam. And you'll notice that every single multiple choice question within this document is accompanied with a document itself. So we're, we're really embracing the student's ability to analyze and to assess primary and secondary sources, whether it's an etching of Paul Revere's Boston massacre or maybe we're looking at a letter from Abigail Adams to her husband to quote unquote, remember the ladies. And so all of the questions that accompany these documents, they're, they're not going to ask anything simple like, you know, what event did the Boston massacre take place in? But instead, you know, what would have caused the Boston massacre to, to have erupted? Or what was one of the major effects of the Boston massacre? So we're focusing on the skill set of cause and effect. Or, you know, being able to contextualize the Boston massacre and ask the students to be able to reference organizations like the Committee of Correspondence and how, you know, this etching was designed to gain sympathy from southern states to encourage them to participate in the upcoming uprising. So these are the kind of things that we're trying to, to focus on within our classroom. And these are also the things that we're beginning to assess more and more, whether it's with a common assessment like this or whether it's with our own independent assessments. And to give you guys an idea as to what this looks like, Mona Lisa and Callie have, have joined me this evening and they're going to walk you through the process of, of tackling a DBQ. So I'm going to keep sharing my screen and I'm going to open up the reform era DBQ that the students began working on for me not that long ago. And how about, how about Callie? If you, if you, ladies, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourselves. Callie, you want to, you want to start them off and show them how you prepare to handle this document? I know, I can't. Callie, we can't hear you. Can you adjust your microphone? No, uh-oh. How about, Callie, you want to keep, keep working on it, Callie? And how about Mona Lisa? Do you want to? Do you want to chime in? What's? You can kind of walk them through the process and see if we can get Callie back up and running. But you want to walk them through that, that first step?
Yeah, sure. So the first step would be to rewrite the prompt. And the prompt is, to what extent has America's identity changed from the 1800 to 1850? So what they're asking is, so what changes happened in America during that period, that time period? Like what new things have occurred? And then next is what, what we would do is to jot down any information that we can think of during this time period. And some things that I jot down was the growth of democracy with Jackson becoming the first Democratic president. And with that, there was an expansion of rights. Also, there was the labor movement and industrialization, which shifted the, the economy to a market economy instead of, instead of farming-based economy. And that also led to the westward expansion where where the, it led to the, to the growth of more slaves being needed and slavery expansion also. Other key concepts is republicanism, the reform era, republican motherhood, sentiment, sentimentalism and paternalism. And in the reform era, there's a bunch of movements. Some are the temperance movement, education reform, prison reform, women's rights movement. And and obviously the abolition movement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to interject real quickly there. So when, when students are asked to, to do DBQs, particularly with APUS history, because this is going to be part of their assessment, one of the things that they're asked to do is, is take 15 minutes to be able to rewrite the prompt so that they can, can better dissect it. Oftentimes, these prompts are wordy and sometimes that can become overwhelming for a lot of the students. So step one is always to make sure that we can help to, to rephrase or reword that prompt to make it a little less intimidating. And then step two is to look at the time period and jot down as much information as you can off the top of your head. So as I mentioned before, we're not pulling away from content, but now our focus is on can we actually use this content knowledge? Can we apply this content knowledge? Callie, you back up and running? No, oh no. I'm sorry, Mona Lisa, sorry, a lot of pressure on you tonight. Do you want to, do you want to walk them through document A?
Yeah, sure. Do I have to read the document?
No, you don't have to. Just as, as far as how you tackled this when, when you ended up doing the DBQ.
So a brief, we would write a brief analysis of the document. And the document is just a petition for prison reform and to and to like build the silos for the mentally ill. And then the document shows change because because Dorothea Dix actually got the prison reform and actually built the asylums to help the mentally ill. And some outside information would be the
Outside information on this one is, is pretty tricky, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, th- this one's tricky in the sense that the, there's, there really aren't others that are kind of making the same or tackling the same efforts. But the fact that Dorothea Dix is not only an advocate of prison, prison reform, but she's also an advocate for women's rights. So oftentimes, what we try to encourage with these students is to have talk about the role that women are starting to play throughout the reform movement, throughout the Republican era, and see how women are starting to embrace these changes. And so the fact that a woman is leading a movement like this is actually pretty impressive change. But yeah, that one's, that one's always kind of a little bit tricky when you get to number three. How about document B? We'll, we'll stop after this.
For document B, a brief analysis would be religious figures advocating for abolition and preaching republican values. You're trying to get people to vote for politicians who are willing to make the changes. This shows a change in identity because religion gave people power to advocate for change and took a stance against slavery. Some outside information would be the Second Great Awakening where destiny lies in your own hands. Utopias like the Shakers were led by Mother Anne, who not only had racial equality, but also sexual equality.
Yeah, very good. And so what, what eventually the students end up doing is they go through each of the documents and they're, they're asked to analyze the document, be able to, to break down the, the main purpose of the document and then does this document demonstrate change? So if we go back to the prompt at the beginning, to what extent has America's identity changed? So as they're going through, hopefully the students are saying, this is an example of change. This is an example of change. This isn't as strong of an example of change. So I, I need to really think or consider how can I use this document to my advantage when I'm actually writing their essay? So I like to say that the, each of these documents are almost like a puzzle piece. And the students are asked to put these puzzle pieces together in a way that allows them to be able to write an argumentative thesis and then to develop a beautiful essay. And it's okay if one person's puzzle looks a little bit different than somebody else's because Mona Lisa's interpretation of document A versus, let's say, Callie's interpretation of document A might be very different or how they want to utilize that document is different. So they still need to know the material. They still need to have that content knowledge. But their ability to utilize that information, and that's what really allows the student to kind of take the lead on their own learning. So what would be an argumentative thesis, Mona Lisa, that you would have developed for this DBQ?
My thesis was America experienced many changes during 1800 to 1850s, but the major movements surrounding republicanism and reform era like the women's rights and abolition movement ultimately failed to accomplish their goal.
Yeah, I, I like, so I, I like what you, what you ended up doing there. So the, the idea is for, for you to be able to determine whether or not identity had changed. And she's acknowledging that, yes, there were some areas of focus, but ultimately this movement failed for, for women or for, for the abolition movement. Because even though women are taking greater steps and are obtaining a greater sense of control, women unfortunately still are not going to be given the right to be able to vote. And African Americans are still going to be enslaved in the, in the South, despite the, the overwhelming support for the abolition movement through men like Charles Grandison Finney or um, through men like, uh, Charles Grandison Finney or, um, uh, uh, the Grimpy Sisters, right? So that's, that's ultimately how students are, are able to, to tackle, uh, those DBQs. And then hopefully able to write an essay based off of that. And just so that you guys have an idea as to what exactly, let's see if I can put this up so it's not as blurry. But just so you guys can see what the students are going to be graded on, their ability to develop an argumentative thesis, their ability to develop a claim. And again, these are skills that Desi has, uh, has begun to embrace. Um, students would get a point in the AP exam for that. Their ability to contextualize the material. Uh, so Mona Lisa had mentioned with Charles Grandison Finney, she brought in outside information like, uh, the second great awakening or brought in Mother Anne and the Shakers as a religious group and as a utopia, uh, that, that embraced things like, uh, racial and sexual equality and provided a lot of evidence as well. So these are all things that would allow her to get points on the AP exam and hopefully, uh, give her a, a stellar score. So hopefully for, for, for students, when they're doing tasks like this, hopefully Mona Lisa, thank you very much. And Callie, I'm, I'm sorry that you weren't able to unmute yourself, but thank you, thank you very much regardless. Um, hopefully for students, this looks familiar because these are all transferable, transferable skills that are going to be utilized with the, uh, with English and science written assignments, with the ELA, MCAS, PSATs, SAP, SATs, obviously the AP US history exam, AP Psych, AP Lang and, and many others as well. Um, and so we, we're really trying to embrace these skill sets at the history and social science level because they are going to be transferable. They are supporting students as they tackle some of these other major assessments, uh, specifically MCAS as well as PSATs and SATs. And hopefully they continue to provide students of Rockland High School with the appropriate skill sets to be able to, to move forward and be successful after high school. And then this is the, the last slide and then I'll, I'll, I'll bow out here. Um, but I also put a link to the civics project, uh, in the upper left-hand corner here, if anybody's interested in seeing it. But, um, one of the mandates that, that Desi is, is requiring of, uh, of both at the eighth grade as well as the high school level is for students to participate in a civics-based research project. Um, it is mandated, all students do have to participate by the time they graduate. Uh, the goal is not to focus on the outcome, but the goal instead is to focus on the students', uh, engagement in the six stages. And so the six, six stages are off on the right-hand side here. Students are first required to examine themselves, uh, as well as their civic identity. And, and that's not only within the district, but that could be within a, a local community, that could be at the state level, national level or international level as well. So it's, it's self-reflection is what they're first asked to do. And then the students are going to identify an issue. And once they've identified an issue, they're going to research and investigate the cause of that particular issue. And then number four is to develop an action plan. And up to this point, everything is really kind of hypothetical. But what really makes this project special is number five. The students are now going to be asked to take action. And so instead of just creating a, a theoretical, how I would tackle this particular issue, they actually want the students to go out and do their best to make change. And it's okay if, if they're not able to. It's okay if their, their implementation falls short, that is okay. But do they understand the appropriate avenues to go through in the hopes of being able to make change? Um, so if they wanted something taken care of at, at the school level, right? Do they know the appropriate avenue to go through to be able to make changes wi- within the school, within the district? So it could have been something like, um, you know, moving to a, a single gown for graduation, right? That could have been something the students might want to, wanted to have advocated for. So do they know the appropriate avenues to go through to, to help that process? Um, and what this does again is it gives the students an opportunity to, to embrace civic engagement. Um, they're embracing civic mindedness and it puts the students in a position to be able to make change. And that's ultimately what we want the students to be able to do. If you see that there's a deficiency within your community, do you know the right ways to go about handling that deficiency? And can we implement changes to, to make our community a better and safer place? And that's ultimately what this project is going to do. So if each of the students at least is able to learn that process, then we're considering that a success. Uh, we're still up in the air as to where we're going to implement this project. We had created a half-year elective for this year. Uh, the course was ACES, so activism and civic engagement for students. But unfortunately, we were not able to run it, given the circumstances of, of this year. Uh, so we are going to try to implement the project with US History Two. I'm going to implement it at you, uh, with the AP US History students, once they finish the assessment. And I'll also try with my honors, modern European senior class as well. So hopefully that'll give us enough data to be able to reflect upon so that we can build a strong curriculum just for this particular project. And we're probably going to implement it in US History Two. But we are going to take a look at how this project is implemented, how effective it is, and hopefully we can move forward successfully from there. And it's nice to know that a lot of the other schools in, in, in the area, in the surrounding area, are also in a similar position where they're in the process of trying to figure out what exactly is this project going to look like, where are we going to implement it? So I've, I've teamed up with, uh, a number of organizations, uh, Five S Meetings, which are, uh, social science, history and social science on the south shore and south coast. Uh, and so the, these chairs get together to talk a little bit about how they're planning on implementing the process. Desi has been kind enough to send a liaison to these meetings to help us to, to better come to grips as to what their expectations are so that we can move forward, uh, and, and then help to, help the students to create a more successful project. Okay? And that's, that's, that's my presentation. And I, I apologize, Callie, I'm so sorry that you weren't able to, to chime in.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question. Do you get a chance to get the students down into, uh, Boston to visit some of the historical sites? Like the Freedom Trail or anything like that?
You know what, we, we used to, um, but it was, it was becoming a little bit difficult because we had, and when, when we were trying to invite the students to go, uh, it ended up being the entire sophomore class. So we ended up with a hundred and twenty-something kids out of the building hall at once. Uh, and so unfortunately, that, I think that made things really, really difficult for the students. Uh, and it made things very difficult for the teachers as well. So we, we've kind of pulled away from that a little bit. Um, but we're, we're hoping to be able to give the students an opportunity as they're participating in the civics project to be able to communicate face-to-face with local leaders within the district as well as our local representatives at, at the state and senate level. Um, and, and hopefully be able to invite them into the classroom to talk a little bit about, um, what, what their role is in government. And, uh, if we have any questions or concerns moving forward, hopefully to try to develop a strong rapport in relationship with them, uh, to open up lines of communication.
Okay, that's fine. Anytime you want, anytime you want, uh, I'll be more than happy to come down to your class.
Uh, we would love that, that would be perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister, that was an awesome presentation, very detailed, really broken down for us non-history buffs here. Um, Callie, I'm sorry also that you didn't get to chime in to us. Maybe we'll have you back another time. Um, this technology isn't always our best suit for all of us, not just, you know, the young kids in the, in the Zoom here with us. Mona Lisa, you did awesome stepping up, um, no pressure and you handled it very well. So thank you both for coming, Mr. McAllister, I thank you. Any other questions quickly before we move on to the next thing?
I'd just like to say thank you, it was nice to have, um, something else on the agenda besides a COVID update. It brings us back to what we're really here for, so thank you very much.
I, I appreciate that, Emily, and, and thank you Jill as well. And, and thank you guys for, for, uh, setting some time aside for us, I, I do appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job.
We won't have hurt feelings if you scoot off of this Zoom right now.
And, and feel, feel free, if anyone again wants to take a look at some of the stuff that we're doing within the classroom, or you want to take a look at some of the, the changes that Desi has made, uh, I'll give, feel free to give everyone access to those hyperlinks and, and you're more than welcome to browse.
Awesome, that's great, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
For your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Moving on to old business, fundraisers completed. We have Esten School Pack selling gift cards, they had six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. They also had their name the circle, um, for a total of nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. I know, gosh. And the child or student at one was Sammy, and I'm going to hopefully say this right, Chagnon, it will be the Sammy Chagnon Circle. So congratulations to her, I know when we did this at MP, it was a huge to-do. Imagine being that child, getting to see your name on the circle every day and getting, I'm sure they get to keep the sign when they're done. So congratulations to Esten for all of your fundraising efforts, especially now when things are just so different used to be. The next one we have is the National Honor Society Sangster Scholarship Fund. Um, that one was canceled.
Two motions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, those were completed, so I don't think we need a vote, but thank you for being on the ball.
We're ready.
Four meetings.
Um, so we'll move on to the budget, FY twenty-one budget, am I passing that to Jane?
Please.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Jane.
Hi.
Uh, I believe everyone should have received, um, a copy of the Munis budget. If you folks, did, did everyone receive that via email today?
Yes, I received it.
Pure reading pleasure, Jane.
Yeah. Numbers, numbers, numbers.
I, I won't, I won't go through that with you, I, I summarized it on Excel. Um, but I do want to thank, um, Biz Slavsky at Town Hall, our town accountant. Um, it was very tricky this year to get the budget into Munis. And what Munis is, is Munis is our, um, accounting system, it's our accounting software. And because of the delay and because of the town meeting vote, we're looking at transfers, uh, the revised bu- budget as our actual budget this year, not the original budget. And it is actually off by eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars due to carryforwards. So what you see in Munis is eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars more than we can actually spend this year.
There goes the damage.
So this is actually, I have the wrong, um, screen up, I have the CARES Act up right now. I will put up the budget, FY twenty-one.
Excuse me.
Sorry, excuse me, so here we are with the budget. So again, just a reinforcement of the fact that we have four different revenue sources. Right, we have grants, we have circuit breaker, we have revolving, and we have the general fund. The general fund is what Munis represents, and that's the twenty-six million, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So our, our total revenue this year is approximately twenty-nine million, twenty-eight million, nine hundred and eighty-three, three hundred and twenty-four. Unfortunately, our budget is twenty-nine million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four, which leaves us with an eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar projected deficit for the current fiscal year. This again is purely, um, driven by salaries and the salaries for remote, uh, for remote learning. So I'm just trying to move you folks off the screen so I can see my screen. Um, so this breaks down our salaries and then shows which revenue we're using to pay those salaries. So for example, salaries one, we're paying twenty million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand from the town appropriation, then approximately a half a million from grants and eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars from our revolving accounts. And then that breaks down again further into salary two, which again are extracurricular sports stipends, et cetera. Um, and expenses and sped. The sped number does not include salaries. The salaries for sped personnel are included in the salary line. This is, um, tuition and out-of-district, uh, transportation. So again, we're looking at eight hundred and, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar deficit. And when we get to the, the next item on the agenda, we're hoping that that's going to be offset with additional, um, COVID, um, money that comes in.
Okay.
Every district in the state is most likely running a deficit like this. We are, we are all employing people that we do not know how we will pay for if the federal government does not, um,
Help out, huh?
Yep.
I just wanted to add that those positions that we're employing are extra sort of COVID people, extra CNAs to help the nurses, extra things like that. The bus monitors and things like that, that we don't normally have, um, but we need to have this year. Um, I also want to thank Jane and her team for, I know that Jane has done her due diligence to find every dollar that she can. Um, and I know she loses sleep over this budget, but she has done an amazing job at trying to keep us as, um, close to not in the red as possible. So I appreciate her, um, Jane, for all that you do every day. On top of all of your COVID case tracking, you are trying to track every dollar.
Are we going to get any help from the state as, because of COVID? Do we know?
They're waiting, they're waiting for the feds, I, I know.
They're waiting for the feds, okay.
Jane, do you have anything to add to that?
No, we don't, um, we're waiting for the federal government.
Yeah, okay. So we need to call them, huh?
Yeah, they, they really need to act.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Many, many reasons.
Yeah.
Any questions, anyone?
No, that's enough.
Okay, thank you, Jane, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jane.
You're welcome, I've got the next one too, the COVID.
I was going to say, the next one is to you, CARES Act funding.
So it, um, this one, this is what the, the government has done to help us so far, which is substantial.
Wow.
Um, we've been allocated one point eight million dollars, um, to the CARES Act in Plymouth County. Um, at first, I think there was a lot of resistance to this money going through Plymouth County as opposed to going through, um, the, going through the state and us being able to apply directly to that, uh, directly to the state to be able to use this money. I'll say that it, it's actually turned out very much to our benefit, um, to be dealing directly with Plymouth County with the cooperation of Town Hall.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's really going exceptionally well. And what I'm hearing from my peers outside of Plymouth County is nightmarish, um, compared to what, um, we have experienced. So this, a, a quick breakdown, right now we're paid what a half a million dollars in salaries. And this right here is where the deficit is. I've budgeted one point three million dollars in salaries that are COVID-related, um, for FY twenty-one. And we've already spent, um, a half a million of it, and I need eight hundred thousand dollars more of it. Um, we've purchased a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in services. These services range from ediscere, which is what we provide the remote, um, academy kiddos in high school, right, all the way to legal bills. So any type of service that we need, it also includes all of our subscriptions for remote learning. All right. Um, fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, I need to give Biz a call in the morning, I think she's snagged it. And I'll, I'll talk to her about that tomorrow and, and have a better explanation. Um, that was not there on Friday and it was, and it's there as a negative, so I need to figure out what that is. Um, supplies, this is predominantly PPE, again, to five hundred and sixty-one thousand. It's PPE, storage, cleaning materials, not our regularly budgeted cleaning materials, but all of the disinfectants and different equipment that we've had to buy above and beyond.
That's very dollars, huh?
All right, half million dollars. Unemployment, um, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to date, there's more of that to come. That's only our bill through October.
Oof.
Um, that's a lot better than we thought it was going to be, Tom, we had that reserved at eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, that's good.
All right, and the reason why we had it reserved at eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, um, was whether or not, I always believed that we weren't going to be responsible for that whole bill.
Okay.
That we weren't going to have to pay and get reimbursed. But they were pushing me to reserve for the full eight eighty-four, so I'm very happy with that figure at three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Great.
So we've spent one point five. The next of the CARES Act, the next row, the next columns are, um, what we're going to spend between now and December thirtieth, um, and purchase orders, it's additional supplies, additional PPE. We have our, one more payroll and we're anticipating a hundred thousand in unemployment. That puts us at two hundred and six for a total payment of one point seven million dollars, which is about a hundred thousand dollars less than our total allocation, um, that we have in reserve if something comes up over the course of the next week. Um, town has also said if, if something comes up that we need, um, they think they can get us a little bit of money that they have not expended all of theirs either. And again, this has been an exceptionally cooperative exercise between, with, um,
The town.
Schools in town, exceptionally cooperative in county.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, um, every step of the way. Little bumpy once in a while, but, you know, Yeah, um, every step of the way. Little bumpy once in a while, but you know, it's the way it is. The, well, you know, we, we both, um, you know, but, we're, we're very cognizant of the needs of police and the needs of fire and the needs of the health department. You know, as they are of us. And we're, we're cooperative when we, you know, run out of things, you know, they may have it, and when they run out of it, we may have it. So we've been very cooperative. We gave a great deal of our PPE to the fire department at the beginning. Um, a lot of our nursing supplies, when we went remote. Um, we were able to give to the fire department, and that was really, um, and they're grateful for that. And they've been calling us to see if we need uh, masks. That type of thing. So, uh, then finally, we have the tech grant. Which is something that Ms. Feliz, uh, Felizy applied for. We were not sure whether or not we were going to get it because we were Plymouth County. And she got it. And so this is how we funded, um, this is how we funded our one-to-one. Initiative uh, with the Chromebooks. And we have an additional thirty-two, I believe, Chromebooks coming in for the preschool. We had originally ordered touchscreens for the preschool, and they're still just, they're not available. We ordered them in August, I believe, and they just never materialized. They're just un, unavailable. So um, we have ordered that, and those are included up here in our that we have outstanding. So, um, so we have about a hundred thousand dollars in the bank. Uh, we're hopeful that that hundred thousand dollars will fall, and they'll let us use it and apply it to, toward salaries. We're hopeful that they'll let the money that the town hasn't used fall and let us use that for salaries as well. Um, but what we really need for them to do is to act again and allow us to use COVID money from the federal level as either revenue replacement or um, to directly fund salaries.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, it looks fine.
Go ahead, Emily.
Um, it's kind of related more towards inventory. Um, who's keeping track of the inventory?
Mark, Shum, Kathy, Ryan, and I.
Okay.
Just everything we're doing this year, we're trying to have three people involved for a lot of reasons. One, to make sure we're all consistent. But if one of us gets sick or goes out, someone else can pick up the ball.
Right.
Yeah, um, so it's between Kathy, Mark, and I. Um, we have a handle, and then Kathy's distributing. In charge of distributing the PPE, it has to go through her. And Mark's responsible for distributing um, the disinfectant um, and cleaning supplies.
And you said we have enough backstop for till twenty twenty-one, middle end of school year?
Yes, we, we're placing an order tomorrow, one more order tomorrow for, for a particular bathroom cleaner that is, we found very effective. Um, and it saves time and doesn't smell.
We had no idea.
That's right.
While it's working, you know, except for the last couple of cases, it really hasn't been in school. So the cleaning and all the PPE and all of that have been working. So that is good. Way they'll step up and give us some funding. Any other questions?
That's it.
No, thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Moving on to the building project update, Dr. Kron.
Thank you. Very briefly. Switch over here. But just, just to let you know where we are in the building project, uh, the design team is finishing up the drawings and specifications. We have required, we have performed our required contractor pre-qualification process. So we received packages from nine general contractors and one hundred and fifteen trade contractors. We've pre-qualified nine general contract, contractors and one hundred and two trade contractors. Final drawings will be available um, to these potential bidders near, uh, just about January sixth. Bids will be received in early February, and construction is due to begin at the end of March. So I just wanted to give you some of the bullets. This is where we are. It's a very exciting time, and um, and that's where we are with the building project. Anyone have any questions?
Oh, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is very exciting. And all of this craziness, there's still a big school getting built for us. Moving to new business. Sorry, Tom. Moving to new business, request for approval of the fundraisers. Um, class of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two are selling cupcakes, Cupcake Charlie's. So I vote yes on that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Emily is seconding. All those in favor? Aye, aye, aye. And make sure to hit up the school committee for some cupcakes.
Yeah, get them over there.
Um, next we have.
Home education.
Home education request, Dr. Minigula.
Yes, um, good evening, everyone. Um, and I have an application for one um, elementary student, grade one. The curriculum I received, this child uh, will receive instruction in all of the content areas, art and music. There's that in health, and then some extracurriculum activities as well.
You find it sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve.
I just have one question. I'm sorry to interrupt. Was this a student that was in our district or not in the district? Was she in the school system and?
My understanding, Jill, is that they've recently moved in to our district. And I'm not sure whether she, you know, uh, was homeschooled, you know, prior to, but.
Or is deeming it safer nowadays, right now? It was very detailed. I was impressed. I just was curious.
It's a first grade or two, maybe.
Yeah, right, right, what the situation was. So, okay. In a second. I'm sorry. All those in favor? And that's the four of us. Thank you, Dr. Minigula.
Thank you.
Moving on to reopening planning, Dr. Kron.
Thank you. All right. I don't know what happened.
That's me. I wanna get to the count.
Long time ago. Now where is? No, we don't want that.
I do.
No pressure.
Our browser back. Where are you, Mr. Browser? Where did you go?
Uh, to the bit bucket.
All right. I'm gonna stop sharing the screen.
Yeah, just.
I was gonna say, take a minute and find it.
Yeah, oh, there we go. I don't understand where everything went. All of a sudden, it's making me sign back in.
Okay.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Tom will talk, we'll all listen.
I can do that anytime you want me to talk. I can tell you about the Freedom Trail, you know, you know.
So. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna talk about it off the top of my head. I think the governor came out with a statement about two weeks ago saying that he wants all schools to return full-time in person. You know, ironically, at the time that the pandemic is hitting its peak. That said, um, we have done quite a bit of work to look ahead and ask ourselves the question, what will happen? What will, what, what would need to happen for us to return to full in-person learning? And um, a number of things would need to take place. The biggest one being social distancing rules would need to change from six feet to three feet. And without being able to, there we go. Now I know why. Hold on. Now I know why. All right. All right. There we go. It, it came back. So if you don't shut the old one. Then you can't get the new one. I will be very brief with this. Don't let it scare you. But it's our goal to transition students back to full in-person learning by the fall of twenty twenty-one. And we hope to start that transition this winter or spring contingent upon public health safety. So transitioning, it's a highly complex task. We would follow Desi's COVID-nineteen guidelines, including at least three feet distancing. So just to be clear, it does not mean a full return to pre-COVID climate. We're working toward providing more in-person learning. It's important to note that cases are increasing. So as we proceed, we'll continue to monitor how the virus is affecting us. Community case counts and spread does have a direct impact on our ability to progress. Current conditions at the state level. Governor Baker has again asked that we return to full in-person learning. He has pointed out that nearly half of the nine hundred and fifty thousand public school students are currently doing all of their learning remotely. Um, we are not part of that cohort. We, our students have been in school um, since the end of September and learning uh, face to face. He has highlighted that he does not want districts to move to remote learning unless it's a last resort. Um, so again, we know full well what that looks like. We had to move to it um, today. Governor Baker suggests that, quote, "Under the new rules, schools and communities designated gray, green, and yellow are expected to have students learning fully in person, if feasible, and should alternate between in-person and remote." State-level conditions, they have determined that education will be determined, determined at the local level, and we will follow all prescribed safety protocols. It's important that, that families in the community understand that six feet between desk, districts, between desks and students has been adopted by the vast majority of schools. Although guidance allowed for a minimum of three feet, vast majority have followed the CDC guidelines in order to maintain a safe environment.
Can we do that?
For, sorry?
Can we do that? Can we get six feet in the schools?
We are at six feet.
Okay, thank you.
We are, yep. For a grade level to return to full in-person learning, for a full day instruction, the class size would need is around eleven to twelve students. And we do not have the capacity to double our classrooms nor the funding to double our staff. So some benchmarks that we'd be looking for, um, if we were able to reach consensus, that moving from six feet to three feet is appropriate. And that can, and we would need convincing evidence from medical experts that less than six feet is safe. We'll need to determine the number of families with students in grades pre-K to twelve who will attend in-person learning at distances less than six feet. The Education Association, the administration, and the school committee would need to alter our agreement about hybrid learning to a full in-person learning model at less than six feet. And a significant decrease in daily cases or vaccine available to school personnel would help to shift a move to less than six feet. Some logistics that we would need to address in order to reopen uh, fully, as the governor is uh, suggesting. The six-feet distancing has enabled us to clarify cases at close contacts. If we switch to three feet, we expect that our close contacts will increase substantially. Guidance for close contacts is not changed, and as you know, um, is six feet for fifteen minutes cumulatively over a twenty-four-hour period. If we return to less, less than six feet before the virus is well-contained, we risk, risk the reality of moving to a full remote learning. This will happen if too many staff members are quarantining and we cannot staff the schools. If ca, cases continue in or outside the school, most, more students and staff will need to quarantine since we will no longer be in six feet of distancing. During the first two months of school, twenty percent of our faculty and paraprofessionals spent time quarantined because of close contacts and or symptoms. Um, this rate of staff being quarantined needs to be consistently monitored and would need to decrease in a full, full in-person learning environment. Sixteen percent of students were quarantined during this time because of close contact symptoms and positive test results. Maintaining a full lunch program would need to be a consideration. We need to utilize, we are utilizing our cafeterias and gymnasiums for lunch in all of our school buildings. Singular desk furniture for seating would need to be used. Um, so we're currently using classroom desks to support appropriate seating in the cafeteria, which would need to be returned to classrooms. A full accounting of the number of desks needed for this transition would need to be completed and purchases made. I'm estimating five hundred desks we would need to make this change. The use of our gymnasiums for lunches creates logistical problems for our gym teachers, obviously, and for after-school athletics. Bus transportation. We're currently allowed to have twenty-four students per bus. We currently have nine buses with three runs. We would have, um, we're looking at different options for families, and it could result in a change to the bus contract. We may need to, we may need to eliminate or add a bus run, and it may be necessary for more families to drive their children to school. All bus routes would need to be reassigned in order to bring the cohorts together, and it could result in family surveys and or a change in school building start and end times. We're currently required to provide a remote learning program to families that request it. So far, this guidance has not changed. So we would need to survey families in regard to their continuation of remote learning needs for the second half of the school year. For health reasons, some families who are currently in the hybrid model may choose to change to a remote learning platform if we transition to a full in-person learning. So let me make sure I end this before I go to the next one. I just want the community and the um, school committee to know that we are planning for the inevitable eventual return to full in-person learning. We are looking at what that would mean from a budget standpoint. We're looking at what that would mean from an operational standpoint. And we, uh, we want that very much, but we also want that to be done safely. And as you can see, there are many um, hurdles for us to cross before we could make that change. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I have a, a full report on this um, that I will be sharing with you and the community tomorrow. And it just basically outlines what I've just gone through. And in addition, there are, there's quite a bit of budgetary information in the full document.
Okay.
Have a question.
Yes.
Is it true that, I don't know, I might have went through it too fast, but if it was down to three feet, it would be eleven kids per classroom?
No, I think, I think that average, if we went down to three feet, we could probably fit closer to eighteen to twenty students. The average, I've got some different numbers, like some of the elementaries think they can handle as many as twenty-two students. And the high school thinks they can handle um, approximately twenty students. So it all depends on, on, it's building to building, and it's different. But I think, I think um, at three feet, we'd be very close to being able to have most kids in school. But it would be logistically very challenging.
Okay. And I think it's worth saying, it took us, Dr. Kron, three months at least to get us to the hybrid model with remote academy and things like that, that it's not going to be a flipped switch for us to go back and decide to jump right into um, being everyone back in the building. It is a process that we're going to need to take the time to figure it all out so that we are safe and the faculty feel safe, and the families feel safe. We've built that trust um, in this town, and we don't wanna lose that.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No, I would just like to say that, yes, a vaccine is coming out, but it's also going to take a long time for all staff and children and faculty to get vaccinated if they want to, or if it's mandatory. And there's gonna be new regulations coming out. And we, like Jill just said, we can't flip the switch and go right back into full, full capacity overnight um, while keeping everybody safe. So hang in there. I know, and there's talks in other towns of them going back remotely or adding in a few grades. Of course, we've gone through those options and talked to other committee members about it. And just right now, it's not possible right now because of the COVID numbers are spiking.
Right. I agree, Emily. The numbers are spiking. We do think that the younger children would benefit um, from going full day, maybe kindergarten in first grade. Um, Rockland's not a town that everyone is feasible to be able to drive their kids. So it's not something that we can just say, you know, everyone drive their kid, and that saves the money on the buses, and then we can buy desks. It's not how we work as a town. We're a team together, and we have to consider all of our scenarios. But that's all. I have anyone else?
That's true.
And I'm hearing Emily as well from other towns that are doing it, um, switching back. You know, it is our goal. It's not that we don't want the kids in here. That's what our job is, right, to educate our students. So it is definitely. Exactly, exactly. And we're in unprecedented times. Who knew we, we would be here today? Is that all, Dr. Kron, on that?
That's all I have.
No other comments?
No, I, I think, I think we would, we definitely have a list of who we would like to get back in the building first. Um, we, we are, we feel very strongly about getting our kindergarteners and first graders back in the building, um, learning to read. So if there's any way we can increase FaceTime for them in the spring, when things are better, hopefully, uh, we will certainly do that. We've spoken repeatedly since the. since the beginning of this, on, on our concerns and wanting to service our special education students and our English language learner students at a higher, at a higher level, so all of these things are pushing, and they're, they're on our list, and I just want everyone to know that we are thinking about it, and we are planning for it, and we're looking forward to it.
And if you have any questions, certainly reach out to us for all of this, everything that we're talking about here tonight, this is, we're going back to the beginning when we were all a village, and we all needed to be able to communicate with each other. So if you have any questions or concerns with anything, please reach out to any one of us. On to then snow days, Dr. Kron.
Hey, get to share my fancy screen one.
We should never have a snow day again.
Until we have no power.
This school year, the state is allowing us to treat snow days as remote learning days.
Yeah.
As a result, our snow day plan for this school year, if it's not safe for an in-person day of school, all students will be learning remotely, so we will call those remote snow days. It's our expectation that your child will be online for a remote day of school if your home has power and there are no other safety issues. Teachers will provide students with synchronous learning, asynchronous learning, and/or independent work. We will be closely monitoring student attendance and participation, and if there are high rates of student absenteeism or special weather-related remote days, we will need to rethink this approach, because every day is valuable and important, so we want to thank parents in advance for helping their children participate. Again, by doing this, we are not, if we do have a snow day, we are not adding a day to of school in June, so I want to remind people that is, that is one of the benefits of, of doing it this way. But if winter weather is extreme and goes beyond a single snow day, we'll need to reassess counting these days as school days, students may not have access to materials. So all of this said, we are anticipating a storm on Wednesday, and I just want everyone, you know, stay tuned, please, we will announce if there is going to be a remote snow day, we will announce that as soon as possible, but a remote snow day, your principals will communicate with students and families their specific schedule. It is very, very similar to a remote learning day, but at the middle school and high school, the schedule is slightly altered. So please, your principals will be communicating that with you, I will be sending out a full document that outlines the schedules for all buildings tomorrow to everyone so that you have it. But I would encourage folks to just to continually look to your principals, who will be providing you with specific information, and that is snow days. Now, I don't have to share my screen anymore.
Is there, Dr. Kron, a percentage of children, students that need to log in in order for it to qualify that it covered a remote snow day?
I have not been given, given any percentage like that, but in my mind, our student, our attendance is usually, you know, a low student attendance for a day would be in the low nineties. If we found attendance in the eighties, I'd say we may want to reconsider counting that as a school day, that would just off the top of my head, but no, we've received no guidance from the state on that.
And do you receive information on how many houses don't have power so that we would weigh that, take that into consideration, too?
Yeah, I'm usually in, in contact with Dave Taylor at the Highway Department, and Mark Shum is always in contact as well as Scott Duffy in the Fire Department, so we have a pretty good idea of what neighborhoods are up and down, and we will, you know, communicate with families, I use Twitter. So I expect to be using Twitter a little bit this winter to communicate, but we also use our email system, so please stay tuned to your emails.
And would the faculty be teaching from home on a snow day, or are they expected to get into the schools?
So on a, on a remote snow day, they will teach from home, on a remote snow day, they will teach from home.
And that way, we're not worrying about them trying to drive in the snow and get into this parking lots and all of this.
Right, on a remote school day, however, just to remind the public and remind everyone, our teachers are coming into school and they are teaching from their classrooms. I feel strongly that our teachers are more effective when they're in their classrooms, they have all of their materials and technology. I think, also think that there is just a different feel for a student when you look at your screen and you see your teacher in their classroom. I think there's a different feel, and I think it ups the level, level of rigor, and we want to do anything we can to up the level of rigor with remote learning.
Good, good.
Thank you, any questions? No, okay, that's the snow days.
Time to go home.
On to extra prep time for teachers, Dr. Kron.
Just want, I want everyone to know that we are working hard and making this happen, we believe we have found a way to do this within the school day. We do not want to take away in-person learning time from our students, we know it's extremely valuable, so we had been exploring some extra half-days where students might go home early, but we have abandoned that. Again, we, we find the in-person time to be invaluable, we want to make sure that we preserve that, so we are looking at ways to find time within the current school day. So for example, one of the things we're exploring is the middle school, instead of having a one-hour session with a teacher, the student may do their eye-ready assessments for forty-five minutes to an hour, thereby freeing up the teachers to work together. The teachers are having trouble finding time to prepare their slides for remote learning, that's one of the elementary's biggest challenges. And I think the middle school and high school are having particular trouble balancing that third cohort of students, so kids who are who are not participating in the regular hybrid in or out of school because they're, they're they are part of that cohort that has been that has been quarantined, so collecting all that work and keeping track of everything, the teachers just need a little extra time to do that, so that's what we're trying to find. And that's all I have on extra prep time for teachers, but I do anticipate announcing something before vacation, if possible.
Okay.
That's the end of this week, right?
Yes, Monday, Tuesday, next week, we still.
Next week, next week.
Yeah. Break. And that's all.
That's all you have, we'll move on to our public service announcements, we'll go with Mrs. Hennessy, she's on my top right today.
I guess I'm lucky to go first, I just want, I wanted to just tell our community to, to stay positive and to keep remembering to be safe and to social distance and wear your mask. We want to all enjoy our holidays together, I know it was a tough decision, we have some sad kids here, but I think everyone's gonna get through it together, and hopefully, we'll be back in January. And stay social distance at Christmas and New Year's, otherwise, us being home, remote for these two weeks is not gonna make a difference, and we'll be doing it again next year, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson?
I have nothing else to add tonight.
Okay, short and sweet, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, have a great Christmas season and holiday season, and if anybody needs any help, just raise your hand, let us know, please, if you run into any issues or problems or something like that, call somebody, and see if we can get you some help. Have a good day, have a good evening.
Thank you, and I would hope that all the families and things in town that are experiencing COVID are starting to feel better soon, and that we can get back in here in January, I hope everyone has a happy and safe holiday and safe New Year as well. And with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Have a good night.
Good night.